Good evening, everyone. Let's begin the meeting of October 10th, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janice Hoppe won't be with us tonight.
Okay.
Mayor, and also, I just got a message from our city attorney, and he is running late. He's at another meeting. He's going to get here as soon as he can.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead with the roll call, then.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
We have a call. She says that afterward. She's not going to say that tonight. Okay, let's move on to the approval of the minutes of September 26, study notes of September 12, and September 19. If there's no changes, then they stand approved as presented. We have no proclamations or ceremonies tonight, and we can move to citizens' right to speak. I didn't see anybody signed up, but I guess we do.
You want me to get the sheet?
If you're the only one.
Because the attorney normally gets that.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm looking. Not someone as the attorney. Not for that.
Which actually kind of disappoints me sometimes. I'll be honest, when I come up here, it's kind of disheartening sometimes to see nobody else here. But anyway, I'm John Clark, 4665 Swadley Street. I'd just like to say that two weeks ago, when I was here, I did raise the question, raised a couple of questions, actually. But I raised the question, where did all the pot money go? And in the last two weeks, I've been out and around, and nobody's given me that answer. So, in fact, they didn't answer any of my questions. So I'm going to ask again. Number one, where did all the pot money go? Number two, have we had enough tax increases? Number three, will legalized hookers and heroin be next? And number four, how much is enough? So I'm not going to spend my precious three minutes telling everyone to vote yes on this or vote no on that. I just want to let everybody know that it's going to be all okay, and not be afraid. Just don't be afraid. Don't be afraid to say no on 69. Doesn't mean you don't want people to have health care. Maybe you just don't want government to control it. And don't be afraid to say no on 72. It doesn't mean you don't want people to stop smoking and be healthy. Maybe you'd just like to see the millions of dollars raised to be spent on the cause. And don't be afraid to say no on 3A or 3B. It is two different issues, by the way. You can vote no on one, yes on another, either way. But it doesn't mean you don't care about kids. Maybe you just want to see the results, or at least the promise, or the discussion of results. And don't be afraid to say no on 4B. Doesn't mean you dislike the arts or culture. Maybe you just realize that the premier public art display, the feature in the City of Wheat Ridge, had no funding from the SCFD, and had no help or support from Wheat Ridge's own cultural commission. It was completely done by high school kids, which is phenomenal. And don't be afraid to say no to 2E. Maybe it just means you're not against growth in Wheat Ridge. Maybe you just prefer private sector growth instead of growing the government. And after all, we don't get anything for the millions of dollars that we spend in interest on the debt. Speaking of 2E, don't be afraid to look at the actual plan for Wadsworth. Realize Wadsworth still gets done without 2E, just in a more sensible and less intrusive manner. And also know that the city has known since 2003, I just learned this two weeks ago, three weeks ago, that the city's known since 2003 about RTD's plan to bring the gold line in, and did nothing for approximately 13-year on the pay-as-you-go plan. Now we have to pay interest on debt for infrastructure. So all I'm trying to say is, don't be afraid. Read the language, look at the plans, know what you're voting for or against, and just let the lemmings say what they will, but just don't be afraid. Thanks.
Okay. I don't see anyone else speaking tonight. Let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Turning none, let's move on to the consent agenda. Jen Wooden.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve payment to ESRI Inc. in the amount of $44,142.46 for the annual license renewal for the geographic information system. At issue, the Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., ESRI, is a sole provider of licensing and support to the city's existing geographical information system, GIS. The proposed annual renewal of licensing and support of the GIS is necessary to maintain engineering, planning, land, and parcel data for the City of Wheat Ridge. The city data is survey quality and allows for accurate planning and development of land. The annual budget of licensing and support will cost $44,142.46, as approved in the 2016 budget.
That's the only item.
I move to approve payment of ESRI Inc. in the amount of $44,142.46 for the annual renewal of the geographic information system.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Davis. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two, Councilmember Davis.
Council Bill Number 23-2016, an ordinance amending Section 26-711 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning billboards to establish a billboard vacancy process, case number ZOA-1605. This is an ordinance on the second reading.
I open the public meeting. I also need an ordinance number.
This will be ordinance number 1610.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report?
We do, Mayor. Lisa Ritchie, Community Development Staff. Tonight, we're here to consider an amendment to codify an existing administrative policy regarding billboard vacancy regulations. On August 1 of this year, we held a study session with city council to confirm their intent to codify the policy and raise the question whether or not you wanted to take a look at other development standards such as height. You indicated at that time that codifying the policy is the only action to take at this time. So essentially, this code amendment results in new provisions in the code regarding processing of billboard vacancies. As only 16 billboards are permitted in the city, having regulations in place to deal with vacancies when they arise, as in the city's best interest. Packet material summarizes the specifics of the ordinance, and the ordinance itself is also included. So without going into too much detail, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does council have any questions on this ordinance? I don't have any public comment, of course, so I'm going to close the public meeting. And I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 23-2016, an ordinance amending Section 26-711 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning billboards to establish a billboard vacancy process on second reading, and that it take effect upon adoption and signature by the mayor.
Thank you. Please cast your votes unless there's discussion.
Who's the second? I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Duran. Mr. Duran, seconded. And please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Item number three, Mr. Matthews.
This is a Council Bill Number 22-2016, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 26-615 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning commercial mobile radio service and making conforming amendments in connection herewith, case number ZOA-Z0A-16-04. At issue, this ordinance repeals and reenacts Section 26-615 regarding commercial mobile radio service, CMRS, regulations, more commonly referred to as cellular communication towers. These facilities are permitted throughout the City of Wheat Ridge, but the regulations have not been updated since 2001, and revisions are needed to align the code with current technology and FCC regulations.
Thank you. I do need an ordinance number again.
We flipped my page. This will be ordinance number 1611.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public meeting. And do I have a staff report?
Sure. I'd be happy to go over this one again. Lisa Ritchie, City Community Development Staff. So tonight, we're considering an amendment which will repeal and reenact the entirety of Section 26-615 regarding CMRS facilities. We held a study session with city council in November of last year, and with Planning Commission on June 2 of this year. This amendment arose primarily due to new FCC regulations for local governments that within 60 days, we review and approve all applications which comply with certain requirements, more specifically, all applications which do not substantially change an existing facility. So the ordinance includes this definition, FCC definition, for substantially change, and lays out the timelines in order to ensure that the city complies with these FCC regulations. In addition, we modernized this section of the code, adding in purpose and intent statements, applicability provisions, streamlining the review and approval process for certain application, as well as included requirements to co-locate facilities when possible. We also took a look at development standards for all facility types, including freestanding towers, roof-mounted facilities, and building or structure-mounted facilities. So this ordinance essentially strives to balance higher design standards with increased technical capacity for providers, allowed greater heights for CMRS antennas, things like that. The packet material summarizes the specifics of the ordinance, and the ordinance itself is also included. So in addition, as part of the packet, staff was contacted by the Wireless Policy Group, WPG. That letter is provided as part of your packet, and I believe an updated letter was also provided to you prior to the hearing. So I'd just like to briefly respond to some of the points in that letter. So essentially, they have the following request. Regarding consistency with federal law, the city attorney took a look at that section and is recommending two changes, one related to the substantial change test and to remove the interference section. Staff and the city attorney are not recommending changes to the other provisions. We feel the ordinance is consistent with federal law in the other areas. Regarding the citing options in residential zone districts, staff recommends no changes at their request. We'd like to note that this ordinance does allow roof-mounted, building and structure-mounted facilities on multifamily and non-residential uses in residential zone districts, such as churches. In addition, we've increased the allowed height for the antenna on these types of facilities, so this ordinance does provide greater technical capacity in residential zone districts than what is in our current ordinance now. Regarding co-location, which is when an existing facility allows new providers to share their structure or add more antennas to an existing facility, WPG's request is not to require a third-party technical study when disagreement occurs between applicants. In staff's opinion, we feel that this is a reasonable alternative. It's provided in a number of other jurisdictions ordinances, and we feel it provides a reasonable level of assurance that every avenue is covered, as we often don't have the technical engineering understanding of all of the complexities of telecommunications. And finally, their last request is the Adjustment to Standards section essentially requests a specific variance process to consider adjustments to standards for CMRS facilities. We do not support this request. We'd like to note, we have no other section in our code that has its own specific variance process, and to date, a search of land use records turned up no cases for variance requests for CMRS facilities. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? We don't have any questions. Oh, we do have a public comment. Jennifer? Yes, or give them to the clerk, and she'll pass them on. Either way.
You can just give them to me. I already have one.
Thank you so much for letting me be here today. My name is Jennifer Price. I represent AT&amp;T. Wireless Policy Group does work on behalf of AT&amp;T, and their requests that they made were specifically on behalf of AT&amp;T. I want to start out by saying that I really want to recognize, I really want to recognize the work that staff did on this code. I think they did an excellent job of being thoughtful about what was necessary from a provider standpoint, and balancing the needs of the community. So, you know, while we did submit a letter, I think it's important to note that staff really did good work on this code. I realize that the letter that Wireless Policy Group submitted had several requests in it, and we're very glad that we were able to move forward, particularly with the legal request that we had made to make it consistent with the federal law, which has some oversight of wireless citing. And recognizing that we're sort of in the last mile of this conversation, right? Tonight is sort of the final reading. I wanted to come in and really focus on, out of all of the requests that we made in the letter, what's probably the one that's going to move the needle most for the City of Wheat Ridge? And as I thought that through, I think the most important request that we can make to you all today is to be open to the conversation of allowing new freestanding wireless facilities in residential neighborhoods. I think on the face of it, when folks first hear that, particularly in a community where this has been not allowed since the original writing of the code 20 years ago, I think on the face of it, it sounds sort of like something I wouldn't want to do either, to be perfectly honest, is to allow that in my community. What I can tell you is that a lot of work has been done in the wireless world in terms of how these sites are deployed and what they look like. And we would argue that often, the work that we can do in stealthing a new site, in basically hiding it in plain sight, in many cases, can be more valuable to the community than what we could do on a rooftop. So for instance, if we site on a rooftop, what we're going to do on that location is screen it from view. And the code asks us to move it as far back as possible, as feasible, to keep it from public view. And we would absolutely agree that the code should request that of us, and that the code should actually try to push us to do that. From a provider standpoint, we prefer to co-locate. We prefer rooftops, we prefer sites of buildings, and we definitely prefer pre-existing wireless structures where we can go and site. It saves us a lot of money, a lot of time and energy, and often, there's a mutual benefit to co-locating. And so those processes move a lot faster. We prefer them, and staff has absolutely done an excellent job of developing a process that would get these rooftops and other co-locatable facilities across the finish line quickly. From a provider standpoint, we can't ask for a better process, and that is, we would agree with staff that that's the way to push us to go, and we're happy to go that direction. However, you have one slide in your packet that I want to really call your attention to, and it's this data usage slide. So this shows you that since 2007, AT&amp;T's network has seen an increase in wireless data usage of 150,000 percent. That is astronomical, and we are doing our best to keep up with it. I can tell you that nationally, over 40 percent of households, so we're talking about residential neighborhoods, are wireless only. They have no landline, and they rely solely on their wireless phone for communication. In the state of Colorado, that number is over 50 percent. So we really like our cell phones in the state of Colorado. And if you look at this data usage chart, that's a hockey stick, right? It is going up to the right, and it's not leveling off. And we see people driving through more and more data and demanding more from us. And when we do that, we do something we call infill. So right now, as I pulled up, actually, I have detectors for wireless sites. I look for them everywhere I go. And certainly, as I pulled up here, I saw the macro site that you have near here. That's a pre-existing structure. And those structures were built to give a sort of blanket coverage to the area. The problem is that when we build those structures, people keep using more data, and we keep having to infill. And so where that wireless structure may have propagated several miles before, as your constituents put more and more demand on that tower, its propagation shrinks, and it gets closer and closer and closer to the site. And so what we're required to do is go in and fill in in the areas that have lost their coverage, and there's so much demand on the network. That's how we get in there and we meet that need. And we see that need as people are relying on their wireless phones in their home. We see that need in residential neighborhoods. So the question, and what we're asking today, is to simply say, we agree, put us on rooftops, put us on the sides of buildings, put us in places where it's best, you can best hide us, but don't exclude the potential that we could hide in plain sight a whole lot better than we could on rooftops. I would also add that often, we see technical problems get in the way, particularly in residential neighborhoods, of our ability to co-locate on pre-existing structures. So for instance, if we're talking about a park, we can't build in the park. Around the park is likely homes, single-family homes. We can't build on the homes. We can't build on their properties. If this code were to allow us to build what's called a monopine, and you have a picture of a monopine in this packet that I've given to you, now that's a standout monopine. That's one that that municipality requested, and so that you can see there's no trees around it, but we can build them within the trees. If we are able to build a monopine, suddenly, we are providing service in that park as people are using their wireless data like crazy. And I can tell you, we take this requirement to provide coverage in residential neighborhoods very seriously, because we know that 70 percent of 911 calls are made on wireless phones. We know that you are likely only using your cellphone in your house. So we need as many options as possible. So those are some options. You've got some pictures in here of some things that we've done in other communities. I will tell you, I was pulling these together last minute today, so these are bigger than what you would see in your community, because we are talking about building heights that are dictated by your code already. So these are taller than what would be built in your community. But we really have potential here to go to a landlord and say, your roof is not structurally sound, but it is within our search ring. So a search ring is really critical in wireless sighting. It is our engineers telling us, here's the coverage objective, here's where we need to fill in, and here's the ring within which you have to pick a place to put your new structure. If there isn't a rooftop in that area that's non-residential in a residential zone, and has the ability to handle what we need to put on top of it in terms of the structure, and isn't pitched at the right direction, and doesn't have a parapet that's too high, if all of those technical things fall into place, we would love to build there. And often, they love us to build there. It's a really mutually beneficial relationship. But if we can't build there, that church may still want us to build on their property. And that's where we can get creative, and we can work with you. And we can do things like building clock towers, and bell towers, and all of the other things. You've got a handful of these in here. I can tell you, if you drive around the area, you can see, some of my favorites are flagpoles. There are flagpoles all over the place that you would never realize are flagpoles. And you might say to yourself, I wonder why they needed a 24-inch pole to hold up that flag. So it's a big pole, but it is, in fact, a wireless facility, and it's hiding in plain sight, and we do it all the time. And so I think the request today is really to give us some options. I like, and I would say AT&amp;T is really, really happy that the code is asking us to go on top of roofs and be on the sides of buildings. That is absolutely the right direction to go. Allowing new freestanding wireless facilities is something that you could put within your, sort of under your purview. So in other words, we're not asking for the same building permit process that would be required of us to go on top of a roof. We're very comfortable with saying, this should be a more strenuous process that should make us not want to do it. We're okay with that. I will tell you that wireless companies are deploying so quickly that a building permit process is incredibly attractive. And so the process that staff created for this, I think, is excellent. But allowing us the opportunity to say, okay, maybe we could do something better. Let's take it in front of city council and see if you agree. I don't know that that hurts, but what does hurt is when providers go to construct something in a community, look at the code, realize that the code does not allow for us to construct what we want, and there's nothing technically that we can do, and then those investment dollars go to other communities. And I'm not telling you that, as, you know, I'm telling you that because I'm actually having this conversation in another community as we speak. And I just happen, I'm the external affairs person, nobody asks me to build anything, but I did happen to run across a conversation between our Duran engineers and our construction guys, where they said, do you think this community would want to know that this is the third year in a row that we have taken back the money that we have put out for their projects? I said, I think they would. And I went to them, and sure enough, they did. And we're in the process of building a new process that would allow for us to bring those investment dollars back into the city. And so I think I've given you, I had a specific request today to show you a map of where our existing freestanding facilities are, so you have that map in here. And then some examples, but as I said, I mean, I think the clock tower here is a great example. This is, you know, a really thin facility. We can do some really interesting things on these facilities. And in fact, if you ever drive I-25 over the Wyoming border, as you hit the Wyoming border, up on the right, there is a buffalo, and it's up on the top of the hill. Have you all, everyone seen the buffalo? Buffalo's a cell tower.
We want a buffalo, don't we?
So that's public art. We have deployed public art as a cell tower. And so that's really my takeaway, is there's a lot that we can do if we do this in partnership with you, and we do this in partnership with staff, and I think there's a good direction to do this, and I think we would be grateful for the opportunity to at least consider a process that would allow that.
Okay, thank you. That's very interesting. Council, do we have some questions of Jennifer or Ms. Price? Mr. Matthews?
Thank you for your presentation. I guess...
I guess I would have questions of staff first. I'd like to hear staff's response to her request, and then we can kind of see what we have to, if anything, sort out.
I'm glad to hear. Yes, I think she certainly raises some legitimate discussion points. Wheat Ridge's CMRS ordinance has just historically not kind of accommodated or encouraged these stealth facilities like some communities do. We do allow freestanding facilities like a monopole, generally in industrial districts, and we see quite a few of those in town. So, we really just didn't kind of create that new, would have been really creating a new section of the code to allow those in residential districts. It's certainly worth, worth talking about. In terms of what that would look like for us, I mean, I think it would probably be, as you've seen in your packet, no freestanding facilities are allowed as a principal use, or no freestanding facilities are allowed in most residential and agricultural zone districts, which is where, which is what most parks are zoned, which is what most churches are zoned. So, it really would be kind of a new section of the code. I think the process that she was describing in terms of having this be more of a discretionary review would certainly seem like it'd be appropriate. Our special use permit process is incorporated into this ordinance as well for certain applications. That actually starts out administrative, and under a few scenarios, such as if there's a written objection from one of the property owners that was notified, or if the applicant doesn't want to agree to maybe a condition that the community development director wants to impose as a condition of approval of a special use permit, that's when it would get triggered to be called up to city council for review. So, that, just pointing out that that, too, is an administrative review. We just really need to create a framework for looking at stealth facilities that we just don't anticipate in our code right now. Certainly, something that could be done if that's council's direction. Just need to craft some kind of, not substantial language, but more than just one sentence, you know, probably needs some, need a description of what those might look like. What is a stealth facility for Wheat Ridge?
Okay, more generous description. Mr. Pond?
I'm going to come back and ask you a question about why we would need to be specific about stealth facilities. So, if I forget that, please remind me. But if I'm tracking correctly on this, two things. One, any new freestanding CMRS facility is a special use permit regardless of what zone district it's in. Yeah, and I'm getting nods to that the answer is yes. And there may be others, but what I'm, what I am seeing is the only exclusion that's noted right now is freestanding in residential areas.
Correct.
That's also correct. Okay. So, is it, is it possible, then, I just to try to kind of come back to what you were saying, to require special use permit for new freestanding in a property, property containing a non-residential or multi-use, multifamily use in a residential zone district? In other words, you, you've already got a kind of a structure of exclusion or inclusion if we were basically saying, okay, you can put a new facility in roof-mounted inside of a residential as it's written in here would be a building permit. If you want to try freestanding, that's a special use.
Correct.
It's a special, special use. And it would take, it would track the special use process that we already have in our, in our code. Coming back to my initial question, so then, why, why would it be necessary to, to specify anything about stealth?
Facilities.
Why would we have to specify that outside of perhaps definitions? But I'm not even sure why, within definitions, we would need to do that if all we're saying is, we're just, we're just opening up that one other zone district to the special use, which is non-residential buildings inside residential zones.
I may be able to speak a little bit to that. So, one of the things that we don't really speak to very well in our freestanding requirements is, say, architectural compatibility or compatibility with the surrounding area, much like we do in our roof-mounted and building-mounted standards. So, I think to, to the director's point, we would have to take a look at that.
Okay. And that would be within this section that we're working on right now, and not, wouldn't happen tonight. So, is there a pathway, perhaps, that makes sense for us to move forward with what we have on the table? And, and I don't know if that's the right thing. I just want to keep it up for discussion, either to, we're either incomplete in our, in our, you know, renovations of this section of code tonight, and we want to hold it, or we're gonna, we can complete this action as, as delivered, and we can come back and make, make a modification, an amendment after, after given a little bit more time. I guess I'm just asking if either of those is possible, and which one would be advisable?
I think either of those is possible. I mean, I think you could certainly continue this public hearing and direct staff to, to work on regulations that would allow stealth facilities in residential and agricultural zone districts, and come back at a date certain and, and bring your revised ordinance. Alternatively, you could take action and direct us to draft something for subsequent review by separate ordinance. I, I don't think it's terribly complex to, to draft this language and review what some other communities do, and I'm sure Jennifer will be a resource in that regard as well, if that's your direction.
Let's, I've got a guy with hand up, so Larry, do your...
I would be willing to make a motion to table the current motion until such time as you can come back to us with that revision. Mike, before doing so, I'd like to ask, A, is there any particular reason to be in a hurry to pass this tonight? And I don't believe there is, that I've heard. And how much time would you like to have to review adding this section?
Go ahead and answer that.
I think 30 days would be, would be adequate to be able to get these, this language drafted.
Other commentary?
Just, just for point of order, there is no motion on the, on the floor right now.
No motion yet, and you're in the middle of a, you still have a public hearing, which I don't think's been closed. I'm thinking that, and it's up to you, but what I'm thinking is that, that right motion might be to continue the public hearing to the 30 days out, be the first meeting in November. That way, the hearing's still open. You'll get additional information. I suspect AT&amp;T or their representative will show up and have comments on it, and you won't have to trigger a new hearing or anything. It'll be part of this hearing.
Okay.
It'd be the November 14th meeting.
Is it, do we have room on that? Okay. So, then that would, so then that would be the...
So, we would continue this hearing until November 14th?
Yeah, so, Mr. Matthews could make that motion.
I move that we continue this hearing, hearing until our meeting on November 14th, 2016, and then take the topic up again.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald, please. Guys, is there any more discussion on this?
I would, I guess, my question is related to the MUN zone district, and knowing that that is in somewhat different from the residential districts, and those buildings may be somewhat different from the residential district, and I'm just kind of curious as to how that is lumped in with the residential and agricultural districts, and, and the reasoning as to how that is lumped in, or what, what's the reasoning to bring those three districts under this heading? Or what was the rationale to have the residential, agricultural, mixed use under this?
I think as we were taking a look at context for the mixed-use neighborhood, it's certainly smaller-scale development typically. It was also a recommendation from Planning Commission during their study session, is that mixed-use neighborhood be included in that.
Okay. And I, I think it also bears important distinction that irrespective of this discussion, Part B does state that the city prohibits all facilities from properties where the principal use is single or two-family dwelling, and that remains correct.
We're seeing head nodding on council that we don't want to revisit that, the prohibition against locating any facilities on single-family or duplex lots.
Can I raise a clarifying question with council? Roof-mounted and building and structure-mounted are potentially allowed on multifamily properties. What I think Ms. Price had suggested was residential zone districts where the principal use is non-residential. Is multifamily off the table for freestanding, or is multifamily eligible for freestanding?
We're being asked if multifamily is off the table for freestanding. I don't know that that's what we want here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll just, I, I think, at this point, as, as you look at the structure of what a special, you know, how to kind of restructure this as a special use permit, I, I don't, I don't know that it's off the table. For me, I see this bullet as I read this one under residential uses. The non-residential and/or multifamily, I think both the, the intent, as I understand it, is that you've got, you've got a, you know, a, a different site and/or, or larger structures that are non-residential, not residential in their character, and therefore, that a building mount is applicable, and I don't see any reason to change that.
All right. Did you get that out? All right. Any other discussion before we cast our vote? Please go ahead.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Item number four, Mr. Urban.
Council Bill Number 24-2016, Ordinance Amending Chapter 16 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Adding a New Section 1668 Entitled Removal of Snow and Ice from Sidewalks. On September 19th, 2016, Staff presented draft ordinance to council regarding snow removal on sidewalks and adjustments. As discussed on August 15th, 2016, Council directed staff to produce, proceed with a process of adopting ordinance by scheduling a first reading. In addition to the ordinance itself, council also provided staff direction with regard to policies and procedures and enforcement, which will be reflected in the city's snow and ice control policy.
Thank you. And this is first reading, so please go ahead and make the motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 24-2016, an ordinance amending Chapter 16 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, adding new section 16-68 entitled Removal of Snow and Ice from Sidewalks on First Reading. Order published. Public hearing set from Monday, October 24th at 7:00 PM in city council chambers, and take effect 15 days after final publication.
I have a second? Second. Seconded by Ms. Davis. And please poll the count, cast your votes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our business meeting tonight. Let's move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Reminder that this Saturday, we are going to have a celebration ribbon cutting for our Kipling Trail. So, if anybody, city council as a reminder, and also our public, if anybody wants to join us, we're going to start out at the, if you want to ride your bike, we're going to start out at the Wheat Ridge High School at 8:30, and ride down the trail to the trailhead on the east side of Kipling, just on the north side of the creek. And that's where the festivities will happen. So, if you don't want to ride your bike, you can park at the rec center and walk over. We'd love to have anybody out and about for that. And then also, as I sent an email to city council, and public probably hasn't heard about this yet, but very excited to announce that we now have a Parks and Recreation Department that received its national accreditation. So, very, very happy about that, and very, very proud of, of the department. I wish you all could have been there to see the reaction of the committee that approved this accreditation. They're, they're very impressed with Wheat Ridge, and it felt very real, and very many compliments about Wheat Ridge, and they actually said Wheat Ridge needs to be a model community for this accreditation process. So, I, I know you all know we have a, a great Parks and Rec system, so I'm very proud and thankful for our rec, Joyce Manware and her staff. So, there's only one, there's only eight in Colorado departments that have received this, and only 141 in the country. So, our police department has received this and been renewed, and we're going to move on to our public works department next. You know, the benefits of, of these accreditations are, it really shows the public that the city is working at the best and highest in meeting national standards for providing customer service. So, I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
That's really exciting. That is quite an honor. I'm delighted. City attorneys' matters.
I apologize for being a few minutes late tonight, trying to be in two places at once and not, not succeeding. Sometimes you just can't make that happen. Carmen reports that you were nice to her a couple of weeks ago, and I appreciate, I appreciate your, your doing that. She said she enjoyed being here. Thank you.
Thank you. And city clerk?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to remind out there in TV land, any boards and commissions members that are watching, please RSVP for the boards and commissions dinner. And then I'm going to tell the council, please RSVP for the boards and commissions dinner, so we have account for food. We need to get that number to the caterer. So, please do that. Only one council person has RSVP'd, so...
Can you share the date again?
It's the 19th, I believe.
Okay.
Then, I wanted to tell voters, you probably got a Blue Book in the mail this weekend by now, and it's all, it, that's put out by the Colorado Legislative Council. It's not put out by the city. It's not put out by the county. It's put out by the legislature. So, it only includes state ballot issues and the judges. This Blue Book is also available online, and truthfully, the easiest way to find it is just write in Blue Book Colorado in your search engine, and, and it'll come up. You also might get the Kelly Blue Book for cars, but there's one that says Ballot Blue Book, and you can find it on there. Then, the pro and con statements, the, or, well, I should say, the Tabor notices were mailed today, and so, those should be coming to you. And I found out that not only will there be pro and con statements for our 2E ballot issue for the city, it's also going to contain pro and con statements for the SCFD issue and the school board issues. Yeah. Then, the last thing is that ballots will start to be mailed on the 17th, the week of the 17th. So, we will have a ballot box in the city council lobby if people want to come in and drop it inside of a building. And we'll also have the drive-up drop box that's already been, our Parks guys have already installed it out in the entrance lane of city hall. So, do you have any questions about voting or anything? And we're going to, since I found out today that the pro and con statements for 2E are, were mailed tomorrow, I hope that I can get the deputy clerk to post those on our city website, so they'll be on there, too. I was waiting, I kind of inquired from some other clerks that have been at this for a long, long time, and they said, well, probably wouldn't hurt, but why don't you just wait until they're mailed, not received, mailed? And so, and actually, I looked at some other cities that I know have ballot issues, and they didn't put their pros and cons statements on their website, and we do, so yay for us. We're transparent. That's all. Thank you.
How, who prepares those?
Pardon me?
Who prepares those statements? Those pros, cons?
The pro and con statements? People submit things, statements, and then it's up, the clerk, by statute, summarizes them and puts, puts together as good of a summary as you can. So, that's actually my job.
Christie Davis?
So, a quick question on that. So, are you, do you kind of, I know, like, before, when we had our information officer, she kind of was a fact checker. So, do you, on those pros and cons statements, do you kind of check the facts of those statements just so that we're not publishing someone's opinions and not really a, you know?
That really isn't part of, that really isn't part of the directive. I think probably...
You can or can't?
You cannot. I mean, the constitution...
Just to summarize.
Constitution says that, that the pro-con statements have to, or the, the notice has to include a, a summary, no more than, I think, 250 words each, of comments received for and against. and against, period. And it, you know, someone can put in anything they want, and if it's under 250 words, you know, you, you summary, you don't really need to summarize at that point, you just put it in. And so, you see, that's what, you know, pro and con stuff is, and, but, but no, otherwise, then, then we'd be injecting ourselves, and the clerk would be injecting herself into, into the substance of the argument. And, and, you know, we don't take a position, we just summarize what we hear, it's kind of.
Yeah, and I would just say that on, on both sides, there was one phrase on each, one on the pro side and one on the con side that I thought that would be better if it had a little bit more information plugged into it, but I just left it the way it was, and it's not that egregious, it might, it's not like something that's an outrageous lie. It's just kind of, that'd be a little more accurate if it had a little bit more information, but it's, it's not that bad, and I just left them.
And even so, it could be an outrageous lie if it's under 250 words. We put it in. You put it in.
It's 500.
Or, yeah, sorry, if it's under the limit, it goes in. It just, I mean, and, I mean, there's no other analysis, and I, and I think that's the intention of the Constitution, I kind of respect that frankly. I mean, it's, it's, you know, people say what they want to say.
Yeah, I just had them done, I forget the date now. Once these deadlines go by, I just forget them, and it was submitted to the county and approved, and I was all done last week, and they were mailed today. So, they should be coming.
Elected officials, Monica, you want to start? Number one, District one?
Yes, I wanted to announce that Council Urban and myself will be hosting a 2E meeting this Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 to 10:30 at the home of Dominic Britton, which is located at 3645 Marshall Street, and we'd like to encourage all those who are undecided or unaware of ballot question 2E to join us, but everyone's welcome. And one other thing, maybe Patrick, you could tell us about the Richard Hart Estate. It got an award also, didn't it? Or it was recognized in District one?
I don't know, I'm sorry, I will.
Oh, I got an email that it was recognized for an award for wedding, I don't know, wedding venue.
Wedding venue or something?
Yeah, yeah, so I just kind of wanted to give a shout out there to that.
I'll, I'll check into that and send an email off to them.
Okay, thanks.
This is called Catch the Manager. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, it being election season, I just want to tell everybody how to vote, and make sure everybody knows to start from the bottom up. And so, if, if you hear anything out there, bottoms up, start from the bottom and work your way up the ballot versus starting from the top and working your way down. Start at the bottom, because that's where the local issues are, and work your way up to the top of the ticket, and work your way through that mess, and the, the issues that are most important to us here in Wheat Ridge are the ones at the bottom of the ballot, and we want you to vote yes on 2E, so please take a look at that and consider voting yes. Thank you.
Please.
All right. A quick apology and a thank you. We, I missed District Three coffee with council on, on Saturday, and I apologize to everyone who I missed, and I want to thank my fabulous partner for holding down the fort on Saturday and hearing a lot of good things from a lot of good people, so thank you, Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Ms. Davis?
I think nothing that's not already been said, so thank you.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald, okay. Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Dahl, I would like for you to remind Ms. Carmen that when someone comes before us for the first time, we are all extraordinarily polite, and we lull them into a false sense of security for the next trip through. So, tell her to beware.
I'll warn her.
And I would like to thank Mr. John Clark for coming in today, and irregardless of what side of an issue you're on, I wish we could have more comment from people, and in addition to the idea of what he's talking about for the election and taxes and money, I'd like to remind everybody that we're in the middle of the ballot, or the budget process here in the city, and that this is a chance for all people to be involved. And this week, I took a look at the new budget software that's on the, on the website, and you can go in and take a look at, well, sort of gross numbers, certainly not a line-by-line item, but you can kind of cast your vote, if you will, in the spirit of our election season here, if you think that Mr. Dahl's making too much money or too little. And I think at least, at the very least, everyone should go take a look at that, so they kind of get an idea of some of the complexity of what's involved in our budget, and where some of the money is going. And then, if you have more questions, call your counselor or, and that's what we're here for, is to get the answers for you that you're not finding in, in the big numbers. So, please, I urge everybody to be involved in the process this year.
Thank you, Ms. Wooden?
Thank you. And I also am hosting a meeting on Tuesday, October 18th, at the Recreation Center. It's at 7:00 in the meeting, in the evening, so that's a Tuesday at 7:00, October 18th. Ally LaSalle from the school board will be there to talk about the school board issues, and will also be discussing 2E, and also just regular District Four update.
Thank you. Since Janice, Janice Hoppe is not able to be here tonight, she asked me to mention once again another discussion in regard to 2E, which will be at Colorado Plus at 6:00, 10:18. 10:18 is, what night, same night as yours. So, that's 6:00, Colorado Plus, a discussion, questions and answers on 2E. I believe that's it then for tonight, and good night all.